Pretty good lesson learned.
Yeah.
I just hope that they're not too bad on like, I don't want someone to like-
Did you see the pictures we have taken there?
We called this special meeting of St. John's City Council to order this 10th day of July. Tonight we'll be discussing the budget and also have an executive session regarding personnel matters with non-elected personnel of the St. John's Police Department. I think we will start off with that. So I'd like to see a motion for an executive session.
Motion for an executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel regarding the Police Department. 10 minutes to include council chief returning.
Okay. Okay. I got a motion and a second. All in favor? All opposed? 4 to 0. Okay, we will resume back at 8:10. Called this meeting back to order. We're going to go into another executive session regarding personal matters of a non-elected personnel regarding the St. John's Police Department again for another 15, for another 15 minutes. We will resume at 25 after. Do I hear a motion? I hear a second motion, all in favor? 5-0. We resume at 25 after.
I have a question.
Called a regular meeting back to order.
Let me make a motion for another 10-minute executive session. Going to put the same, same matter.
Got a motion on the table, you have a second. Call those in favor? I'm against. 4 and 1.
Were you 4 last time? Okay.
How long? 10 minutes. Go back into executive session, resume at 8:35. Called this special meeting back to order. Okay, Jamie, what you got?
A black screen.
Don't talk to them like you don't need me here for this. You really don't want me here for this.
Thank you, Jim. Have a good evening.
Your stuff shut off.
Yeah, it's not coming back on either.
I hear it.
Yeah. I think for the minute before. Okay, so what I sent you in the email earlier, I have made some changes. Melissa had Vicky Dreling go over a few things just because she was so hands-on. She wanted another pair of eyes to come in and look at it. And thankfully, she did. There was a stepless skip with having the library, so we had to go in there and make a few changes. It did allow us to levy just a little bit more money. Overall, everything is balanced. Her biggest recommendations is to look at rates. There's several funds that you can see, I mean, over the three courses that is in front of you, they're depleting with the unencumbered cash beginning January 1st. So that's definitely something that we need to be aware of. I think I might just-
Do we have this in paper, the warning in front of us?
Yes. You're looking at the same thing.
This is the same thing that she gave me this morning?
No. The numbers have changed since you got it this morning.
Here, Jim, pick these up. I got them. Okay.
Hi.
Hey.
Hi. I want to die. I just, we just started. But I wanted to probably just allow you to, I don't feel comfortable explaining it just yet. If you don't care. I mean, I have a better name. I have- Yep. I have you on speaker and everyone's here. Can you, oh. Are you still? Yep.
Hang on a second.
Why are you not talking? If you guys don't care, I'm going to move this, this way a little bit. Since I did it without.
Wait to ask.
Waiting for an answer.
Wait to ask.
Sorry. Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you, can you hear me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Jamie, did you get everybody a copy of the revision that we just adopted?
Yes, I did. I printed out the new one that I PDF'd to you. And I have, I have them on the certificate page right now.
I'm sorry, can I read this?
I have them on the certificate page up on the big screen right now.
Okay, got it. And I'm trying to get ahead of you, so on the certificate page, and I'm trying to press the page 2.
Okay.
So page 2 is actually your computation page. So this says, how much are allowed to be charged, okay? With all, and through other bills, to increase the amount that we're writing.
I must be listening to you now.
Jamie, I didn't know that you don't have that part for each page, can I?
Um, no, I didn't.
Oh, yeah. And I'm sorry, and I don't have that separate part of me. Basically, there's regular pages that's calculated pages, but if you guys don't have your chart, then Jamie can take that for you. And those two steps, sort of, because this first page or page two, if you're looking at, this actually just does a limitation for what you're handling. You have to keep that in mind for 36. And the general fund is a new one for the manual. So this first page is completing, so I'm not sure what that is, based on what we've done with the general fund last. Do you know that these pieces are going to be used-
Maybe I'll check.
Hey, Melissa?
Can you get her on Skype?
Can I call you on?
Can you get her on Skype, perchance? Where we can see her?
I don't have Skype, do you?
Something, I don't even have my phone.
Can I try calling you on the office phone real quick? We're having-
Oh, are you not going to call us by the wall?
No.
Yeah, we can try that.
Okay, I'll call you right back.
Okay.
Do you have to have like, a jack for that deal? I think Pam has speakers over here, don't she? You can plug in there?
Yeah, it sits right next to my kid, but I can barely hear.
For a deaf guy that has to read lips, it's really difficult. You should have enough, we pulled it out there a few times.
Yeah, I'm just making sure nothing's going to come cracking down as I pull.
Hello?
Okay. Is that better for you guys?
That's a little better.
Okay. I've volume'd you all the way up.
Can you hear me a little bit better?
All the way up, much better.
Okay.
Okay. And then you guys have your original, your regular meeting next week, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If you need me to, I am available to make it down there next week for your regular meeting, if we need to do that as well. I just wasn't available to make it down there tonight because of some prior obligations. So on the computation page, on page 2, that is where we calculate how much you're allowed to levy without exceeding the tax limit that's in place, okay? So you guys get, last year you levied $381,689, which is line 1 of that page 2. And then what we do on this first page here that you have in front of you, we subtract out what was for the library and calculate how much of a levy increase you get because of just levying for the general fund. And we do this in two steps because if you guys decide not to levy for the library this year, we have to take that out and not allow that increase for that, okay? So basically, what we're allowed to do is levy for an additional $6,943 just because of inflation and what we used within the general fund last year. And that's what the total of 2016 is. Now, the one thing you do not have, and like I said, Jamie can get that printed on for you guys, it's a second page in this computation. It goes through the influx, or excuse me, the inflation adjustments for what was levied for the library. Because we also get to increase that levy as well. But the good news is that increase doesn't actually have to be used for the library. It's just for the city in general, okay? So back on page 1 is a little bit of a summary of where we've got the draft of the budget. And what Jamie and I did, we put a math formula together without doing that increase for you. So right now, we have to, on the first line there, the general fund, spending $990,944 of expenditures from 2019 years, which brings in $366,419 of tax dollars. And then the second fund that you're going to levy tax dollars for, in your library fund, is going to be $28,500 and receiving $22,836 of tax dollars. Now, a lot of you might ask why we're doing $28,500 on the library? That is actually going to be on page 9 of your budget. So let's jump over to that one because that's a little less explanation than going through the general fund. So let's do that one first, on the library, on page 9. We're really only appropriating $26,500 to the library. However, since we've collected some delinquent taxes over the last few years, but haven't actually been paid out to the library and the money's are still owed to the library since they were levied with the purpose of it. So we built in a little bit of a budget cushion so then when it comes time to making those appropriations, Jamie and Pam can go ahead and cut those checks for the city and not exceed budget restrictions in the 2019 year. But we're still only levy enough to cover the normal appropriation. Does everybody follow what I'm talking about on that?
I'm getting some head nods.
Question.
Right.
I got a head nod and a question.
Are you thinking-
Okay, what's the question?
On the ad valorem taxes and the assessed evaluation, are we working with an increased assessed evaluation plus an increase in the mill levy also?
That is a very good question. So to talk about the assessed valuation, I'm going to have you skip to page 18 on the budget, which is the budget summary. For the city of St. John, your assessed valuation did in fact increase the year, but not a huge increase. It only increased approximately $50,000 overall. Last year, under that, on page 18, where you can see kind of what I'm explaining.
Okay. That's where I read it earlier.
Okay. Yeah. And last year, the final valuation, and I'm not sure what the estimated valuation was at the time of doing the budget for 18, uh, one, but your final valuation came in at just slightly under $6 million. And then this year, it was slightly under $6,500,000 of that. So to get the value of what each mill is worth for you, if you take that assessed valuation and divide it by 1,000, that'll tell you what each mill's worth. So right now, the 2019, Mia Keenan from the clerk has basically estimated a value for each mill, So for every mill we levy, we're going to get $6,000. So right now, with the way we have the budget drafted, to get the maximum dollars that you're authorized to levy, we're sitting at an approximate 64.371 mils, which you'll see on that very far right-hand column under the estimated tax rate.
Okay. Rhetorical question, Jamie. Just because the assessed valuation goes up every year and we can by statute add an increase in mill levy by 1.2 or 3%, do we have to increase the taxes every year by that amount? Because it's a building tax increase every time. The assessed valuation goes up and therefore the mill levy goes up. It's an inflationary, automatic inflationary part of our budget. Is it necessary?
Is it necessary?
It's actually in two steps with that.
I understand that.
So if, if your mill levy and your assessed valuation goes up, it's actually going, and you levy for the same dollar amount that you levied for last year. So if we levied $50,000 in total last year, and then our mill levy was at 3 mils. And I'm just putting random numbers at this point. And if we were to go levy that same $50,000 this year, but our assessed valuation increased, we would actually drop below 3 mils of what we're levying, dollar for dollar, at that point. Which causes you to increase in the number of mills, and it wasn't even a full mill increase, we went from 63.625 to the 64.371. It is because of the allowed increase for inflation for the CPI index that the state tax would allow in place. Because the state realizes things are continuing to get, continuing to get lower expense. So they can't put a true lid on the levy. They have to give you a little bit of adjustment. You know, insurance rates continue to arrive, fuel prices, things like that. So that's why they built in that inflation rate in there for you.
So Melissa, I think he's asking like, just because the state allows it, do we have to?
You do not have to. We can back off on it. But the thing is, if we back off on that this year, and only levy the $800 that we've had in the past, we certainly can do so. Then next year, all you can do is the inflation rate from what we levy for the 19 budget to what's allowed next year. You can't add back the inflation that we didn't take this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No, totally, it makes sense. I totally understand the process. I'm questioning whether it's necessary to always spend more money every year just because we can.
Right. And that is necessarily up to you guys, at that point. You'll have to make that decision, you know, you guys being in, you know, where you want us to make adjustments on the budget.
Okay. I've said my piece. Well, for the first time.
I was going to say, you're not done yet.
So, and typically, the approach I take, just because it, you know, it's hard to do the budget right now. And just with the tax limit base, you can't top one year and then just increase the next year which truly needed because of that tax front. So right now, typically what I do is flip the city's accountants and tell them that I want to, we drop the budget to maximize the levy, the maximum amount that you're authorized to do without taking it to public books. If you guys want to cut it back, we certainly can do so. There are a few things I'd like to point out, if you've got a few minutes, but we're over some of the specific funds. And then you guys can kind of go line by line and decide if, look, sufficiently enough, there are a few lines in the general fund with like wages and things like that. It looks like we may have had the increases in wages on the, what, the partnership request versus what we actually split in the town. I don't know if you guys are authorizing those wages increase or not. So you might want to look at those a little bit in detail, that Jamie knows where, what we cut, how much we want to cut, and where we want to be with the levy. My main area that I would want to focus on, and the ones that actually don't levy tax dollars right now, I mean, looking at some of your utility funds. And let me find the page number here for you.
What page did she say?
She gave it.
That is...
On utility.
Okay. Right. Let's look at your super utility fund, I think, before, you know, yes.
Yeah.
Super utility budget, that's page 13. And it's the man at the cap of the page. And when looking at that, as we're in 2017 action figures, you brought in levy of $78,669. And we spent out of expenditures of $115,880. We're spending that more than what we're bringing in. Now, I do realize that some of those expenditures were actually expenses paid out and transfers to other funds, such as your capital improvements, your basement fund, and then the general fund. The thing I just want to make sure that you guys are watching are your utility rates, since you're using numbers to sustain the rest of the city's operations as well, to make sure we're charging a high enough rate and putting enough money aside in reserves. And that's one of the areas that I find that, and I'm not saying that you're actually in that situation, just that you're aware of that to watch or study to have pretty good reserve aside depending on your improvement plan for the tour and the water service and things like that. So you're not getting that bind to where you have to go take as much of that out as you have to revisit the nitrate plant project. Because I mean, truly, when did you like do that project? Was it five years ago?
2012. About, yeah, about five, six years ago.
Yeah. So, and you guys had to take a substantial loan out for that, and you'll be paying that back for a period of time. So it'd be nice if you can kind of set a little bit of fine each year, just to try, we don't have to do such a huge, tiny, small project in the future. It makes it a little bit easier for you guys, and you'd cut down on benefits you'd have to pay for some of those projects, too. Still, on that same page with that 13, or page 13, with the side of waste fund, which is your trash fund, I did notice that you're paying some personal service out of that, which is your region's benefits. Really, what you're doing for your side of waste is trash, so you're contacting that to a third party who's that trash.
Yes.
Normally, I would not see, expect to see wages charged to that fund. It's typically what you have in a situation when all it looks like you're orientated to see what you're charged at that plate. Normally, you have your fee, fee to a contractor, and then you're going to charge like maybe a thousand to your current fund that they're taking out just for, or sending things like that to help cover those costs. You usually don't really have enough to cover the cost of the whole.
To talk directly into your speaker.
But if you notice, you would have probably about $9,000 in your cash reserves with the nutback. You started out with $54,000 in the beginning of 17, and you've gone to $45,000. So if you keep on that track and start taking, so that eventually you're not going to have a cash reserve in that fund to cover the, um, the time gap for when you burn it versus to when your customers actually pay it. So you're always going to have that little bit of gap in the, you know, have trouble with the accounts and not collecting it, or it's highly passionate, things like that. So you might want to watch that, too, and consider not charging tariffs for that fund. And maybe just try to add it, but assuming that is, I think, Jamie, you told me that that is your utility billing?
Yeah. The billing clerk gets paid 90% out of 4140 and 10%, out of 3601.
Okay. So 90% out of the letter of life. So you might just consider maybe paying 100% out of the, out of the letter of life fund.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure why the 10%. I don't, I don't know why it's split, but.
Where does that go and down to?
Just to be considered, just sort of to make it easier in the future, budget wise, just keeping in mind for whoever's doing the books and processing payroll and things like that. So sometimes the simple method is easier than you're going to do it. And that. And really, with, I mean, the letter of life fund, I'm trying to really get a little back here on that a little bit. Better left each, this team. And the main thing I want to add to you about, to that, oh, three courses of the general reset, we connect those terms first. When Jamie left the budget again, we were running into a little bit of a tight situation. We were transferring out, it looks like, on average, $170,000 each year from the letter of life to the general fund. It's starting to catch up a little bit. And we're running into a cash flow issue within the letter of life fund. So you'll notice with the 18 year, that transfer in general, capital improvement, equipment review, and letter of service, we were right, we just spilled zeros from the 18 year. Now, you still have that budget to be committed in the 18 year. But if we left out those transfers after, or the budget, or part of your estimates, those would have actually taken your cash to a negative balance in letter of life fund for 18. If we spend everything at the bed, like it was best to that. So that's not, that's not saying that we can't transfer anything in 18, except we just kind of need to watch that and make sure you're leaving enough cash for your school, a few months of operation of the letter of life at your end. Then we did, we had a budget to transfer our 19 into the general fund, and we allowed that with a lot of the budget, the income of cash down to zero for 2019. Just to get you the maximum of spending ability in the 2019 year, so that you do actually make some money returns, you wouldn't have to pay the additional calculation cost in the middle of the budget. So it's not necessarily to say that we're going to spend that out many. I just, I kind of explained to Jamie, on those, that levy forms, in the past, I've done them better just to, just to the budget go down to zero, even though you don't really plan on spending them down to zero.
Jamie, I have a question for you.
Do I have any questions over that process or any objections to that, that I need to kind of guide Jamie in a different direction on it?
You have in your budget, person, personnel services, personnel services? Is that personnel and is that wages?
Correct.
It's misspelled and it's wages. It's personnel, not personal.
Actually, with this data can answer, Jamie was going to get services.
It's personnel services, and therefore it's wages.
This is from the state, I did not make this? I just put it in the numbers.
Well, tell the state they can't spell.
I'll let you talk to one of your senators or something.
Now, that is how the state can, was reform student, was processing service.
I just wanted to make sure that-
And necessarily, could just wait until, if you're willing to, that your papers and your, and you have to think like that.
Because it's not just wages. Cause it's not just wages.
Contractual is, what's contractual?
Contractual is going to be like your insurance, your, your stuff like that, the commodities, like I told you before, is...
Commodities or supplies and parts and miscellaneous, whatever, capital outline, I understand, okay. And commodities is what, what you need to make, just supplies or whatever we need, okay, I understand. I was pretty sure it was just a misspelling, I just wanted to clarify it.
I'll let you tell the state that they're wrong.
They're going to have a problem. The elected broke back, what do you expect?
See this to the right, does two nine, two thousand nineteen already have the department request in?
Yes, so two thousand nineteen has everything that the department heads requested is in the two thousand and nineteen line item, so you'll see a little bit of difference. Um, we did go through some of eighteen, um, you know, like Melissa said, it's kind of hard to go through and figure out the budget halfway through a year, but what we did was just looked, we've looked at what we've spent so far out of some of those different line items, and we've just kind of judged and, like, if we've spent two thousand dollars and we know that we're going to spend another two thousand, we try to, we've tried to level everything out as much as we can, there's...
If you do it at the same time every year, the same date every year, then you, you have, you're starting and beginning at the same...
Right, the, the biggest difficult, like, the biggest part about this that is so difficult is, you know, there's no plan, like, we have all these replacement funds, we have all of these transfers, this going this way and this way, but no one knows why or how or...
How we're going to utilize them.
Correct, or why it's even being done the way it's being done.
So as far as like the big time spending, it'd be good to come up with like a strategic plan to know how to budget better, so as far as like machinery and roads and...
Yeah, a strategic plan to be able to start replacing, and Jeff and I have been talking about that.
Well, and one thing that, that's not explained there is on the contractual for, um, light production is that we're going into a contract year in January, we're assigned a contract in January, we don't know how much that's going to change for next year.
Right.
The other thing is, is we picked up a business that's probably going to run four or five thousand dollars a month, so we have to figure all those kilowatts in by guess. Now, a year from now, we'll know.
Exactly.
We'll know what they're, what it costs.
That's what the hundred and ten thousand dollar increase is, that was my question.
Yeah, and that, because that's where we pay, that's where we pay our, that's where we pay our Midwest Energy Bill. So without knowing what the contract's going to do in January, that may change. We don't think if it does, it'll change very little, but still between that and the grocery store, we're kind of at a standstill here as to know really what's happening, because we don't know, so...
Better there on the safe side, I guess.
And two, if you get stuck in a summer like this where we've had fifteen days of a hundred degree heat, why, we sell more, but it takes more to pay for it too, so, you know, it's kind of one of them guessing by golly deals, really, is what it is, so...
Well, and when we jump in on that, if we need to, we can build in some budget for some of that water and light fund as well, um, so we don't run into that situation if you think we're going to have to purchase a surplus of power with the grocery store running, or with it being a little bit, possibly a warmer summer next year or something. What we could do is put in, that we're going to receive some miscellaneous income, if they're like, if they're, if they're completely leased, and then we can just put a bigger amount in here in miscellaneous expense, right, and for couple of expenditures, knowing that those, and they'd be the same dollar amount. So we could go in and say a hundred thousand dollars miscellaneous and a hundred thousand dollars miscellaneous expense, they'd wash each other out, but that, they increase your spending authority without having to go and amend the budget later.
Okay, yeah.
That might be what we do.
Yeah.
So we, we could learn back what you'd like.
I mean, leave the hundred and ten thousand you got budgeted in there for increase and add in a miscellaneous income.
And then it just, if not, it'll just wash, yeah. Yeah, that might be not a bad idea. I really don't know where, where we're at, um, percentage wise this year compared to last year. I haven't set, I don't figure, you know, where we set this time last year.
Or still what's used.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, until I, and I, and I, Pam got part of the bills to me, but she didn't get all of them, she sent the rest on email, I haven't opened them up yet, so I can kind of go through there and tell and go back from last year, I can kind of tell you about where we're at, so...
But you won't know till next year with the new, with the new grocery store, I mean, that's...
You know, we're going to get a few months this year, but it's going to be cooling off by then too, so...
Right.
I mean, we're going to start picking up some load off that meter probably next week, but it'll just be as they cut it over, I mean, it's not going to be running load, it's just going to be, you know, what it takes inside the building, so it'll be, it'll be a year from now before we really have any kind of a feel as to what's going on, and probably even till September or October to go through one season, so...
Right.
We don't, we don't estimate anything else to really change much, but that will, so...
Any other questions for Melissa? Melissa, I think that we can let you go and they can put me under the hot seat and I'll call you tomorrow.
Yep, that'll be fine, and like I said, if we need to do, with Jamie, I can make whatever revisions you guys have, and get through that process, and have another draft for you at your regular meeting. Uh, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, we have until Thurs- Thursday or Wednesday of next week, because it's in the paper to publish on time.
Thursday at noon.
Thursday at noon. So if you guys choose to, um, if you want me called at next council meeting, I'm certainly glad to do so, like I said, I'm available that evening, I can come down and it might be a little bit easier to have some of those discussions with you, and we can make those changes at that time, because Jamie has everything saved on her computer system, so we can easily make those changes that night, and go through that process with me.
Perfect.
So just let, just let Jamie know which way you would record it well, and she'll arrange that with me, okay?
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you, Melissa.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, you guys have a good evening.
You do the same, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So what did she call that?
Basically just adding in miscellaneous income in the, in the utility.
And then miscellaneous expense on top of...
And then miscellaneous expense, yeah.
And that just increases the availability, just, but, just because it's budgeted doesn't mean that the, and that's kind of what I've been seeing in some of these funds is, I mean, we have the budget authority, but our cash is obviously declining every year, so...
Miscellaneous income, which would be...
Jeff, I have a question, we have many in the storm sewer budget to replace storm sewer, we have many in the sewer budget to replace sewer. I don't know if we can buy a hundred feet or a half a mile with what we're setting aside. Do you have any idea what this...
I can tell you on the sanitary sewer, I can't tell you on the storm sewer, because storm sewer is all different sizes, sanitary sewer is eight inch. Um, you know, of course, some of you have seen the tapes that I have upstairs, Jim's seen quite a few of them of the maintenance that needs to be done, the repairs that need to be done, and, and on, um, uh, the sanitary sewer, we need about ten thousand feet of repairs done, and it'll run right at a million dollars. So, a hundred dollar foot, that's about what, by the time that you clean it, you line it, you inspect it, and that, so it comes out.
So you largely do it in place, inside too?
Oh, they, they run it from manhole to manhole, yeah.
Inside too.
Yeah, sure, yeah. So, and it's done with a, you know, they do the camera and they, and they check all of it and, and bad breaks and stuff like that, and then they go from there and they put a liner in it, pull it back with a bag, and that's how they repair it. We've got some that are in really bad shape, we've got some that could last a few more years. You know, we jet them as often as we can, but, uh, the clay tile is just in really tough shape.
And you will have, have to hire an outside contractor.
Oh, yeah, there's a guy, there's a guy south of Wichita that's probably as close as anybody that does it right now, and they're, and they're competitive with everybody else in the country, they travel all over the country, they go up to forty-eight inch pipe, you can do the same thing with storm sewer, so, and they do a lot of storm sewer too. That we haven't inspected for two reasons, one, we haven't had the time, it's the wrong time of year to start even looking at it, but we need to jet them and have a camera and look at them. You know, we do have some drainage problems, we know, we've discussed some ways that we could get around some of this, but whether it's damage to the pipe, or whether it's poor design, which we feel, Marshall and I have talked about this quite a bit, we think most of it's probably poor design, the way that it drains back, and the fact that the town is so flat that everything here has to wait until this leaves, you know? So there's a lot of discussion about who's right and wrong there, but still, um, any kind of a, any kind of a repair of any sort, whether we want to try and put a pond in somewhere and push part of that water the other way and let it set and come back, you know, sixty-four dollar question. But regardless, you know, on eight inch pipe, it's a hundred bucks a foot, on twenty-four inch pipe, it might be two hundred and fifty, I don't know, so... And we have to have a third party do the camera stuff, because we don't have it, so...
So as of right now, we have no transfers going out of water and light fund? Like we cut them last year, if I remember right, as well?
Yeah, we did. Which makes me a little nervous, because I know Jeff talks like, do we really need those transfers, but then, on the other side of things, Ladonna and Pam have always said, like, that's what, I mean, the general fund makes no money.
Yeah, that's what builds a general fund, basically.
So that's one of the things that has left me pretty nervous, just because of, and that's not saying that's wrong, that's just my gut feeling, because that's what I was told, whether that's right or wrong, I don't know, but you know, you're...
I know last year we had to do it just for the simple fact that we spent money that should have come out of, I believe, the capital outlet instead of our cash flow for the meters.
Well, it should have been done on a long-term deal, sure, right? It should have been done.
Yeah, the meters is...
You know, the fund forty-one that she kept talking about was the water and light fund, and that's where it came from, you know?
Right, and that's what hurt our cash flow.
Instead of being a five-year, a five-year, short-term, you know, whether it had been a GO or whatever we would have done to knock that down.
It would have still been out of the, the capital outlet, would have still been in fund forty-one forty-one.
Yeah, it still would have been out of forty-one forty-one.
And, and I mean, you can see it on there.
Yeah, it took a big night out of it, it really did.
But, like, with that transfer out, on the general fund, you know, we're going from one point one at the beginning of eighteen, to starting in the beginning of nineteen at six hundred and twenty-four.
Yeah, and it took ten years to build it, it'll take ten years to build it back.
That's a poor state, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, Jamie?
Well, in your, in your major budget, you are planning on transferring water to five hundred and seventy-two thousand.
For nineteen, yes, we took eighteen's out.
For nineteen, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we took, we took eight, all of eighteen's transfers out.
Transfers out.
Cause it doesn't seem like it's going to be, oh, it wasn't possible, I mean, it was negative four hundred and some thousand.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
Well, that's about what we were short shy last year was three hundred...
Three seventy-eight or three eighty-eight or something like that, I think, yeah.
Three hundred and eighty thousand shy, which is why we had to cut the transfers last year for eighteen.
Right.
And, and we kind of knew that going in that we may have to do that for at least two years, maybe.
Yeah, three years.
So hopefully it'll just phase itself out with the, but I mean...
I mean, I guess the other thing is, is a person really has to watch their spending for nineteen and hope that there's money left that we would transfer.
Correct. And that's, I mean, that, I mean, I've been voicing that to you guys all along, like, I mean, Pam and I have gone through all of the bills, making sure that everything we're paying, we're actually using, I mean, you guys have been here through the process. I mean, I'm a, I'm a stickler on overtime, like, we don't, we don't do a lot of overtime. If anyone gets overtime, it's usually Jen, because of the, you know, being here till five people coming in and then having to get everything closed down and stuff, but I mean, she's very cautious on that, I mean, it's just...
Well, my guys too, and when they go out, they let me know.
Yeah, and we're doing...
I don't care if it's three in the morning, they let me know, so...
We're doing everything we can to, to cut that, I mean, we don't...
When it comes down to spending, I'd appreciate, like, if they're in a meeting, like, if you see something that we're about to vote on and spend some money, I'd appreciate you to say something, I think it's important.
And that's, that's part of the reason I'd like to get a plan in place, because I don't, I mean, I don't know enough coming into this, like, I'm, I'm learning, so I don't know enough, I would really enjoy it, and it's not just for me, I think it'd be beneficial for the, the community to have that plan, hey, this is what our money's going towards, like, this is our plan, this is what, if we don't do that, I mean, it hasn't been done, and now we have a hundred-year-old sewer that's about to do who knows what, I mean...
Well, we talked about it before you guys came too, that, you know, if we'd set it up on a five-year plan or a ten-year plan, but, but two, if we, if we say we want to spend a hundred thousand a year and take however many feet that we can pay for there, still the money's still got to be coming back into cover, during about three years, we're not going to have any money.
Right.
You know?
And that's something that I am, I'm going to start, Melissa has recommended looking at all of the rates, so I'm going to, I know Jen, she finally showed me an email, she thought I got it, it went to the city's web, the city's email, and sometimes I get them and sometimes I don't, it's kind of weird, but she, uh, they, was it KDHE that just sent out the comparison? So I have that, and I'm going to be going over everything, and Pam brought up, I thought it was kind of a really good idea, like, if we were to have to increase rates, to maybe even do that in a step plan, like, we're going to increase one percent every year for however many years, you know, so it's not a total, we're going to increase rates twenty percent or, you know, not going to...
We'll at least have a town meeting or something, you know, let people know, because without bringing up, especially like the sewer rates, there's no financial money available for us to do anything long-term at all, without getting the rates up, and we're way under...
I mean, they, they said they're not going to help us if we're not helping ourselves.
Water, we're getting fairly close, but the sewer, we're way behind on, so...
Water, we're about half of the rate on water as any city of our size.
I think it said, I think from that state deal, when we went to that meeting this spring, it was like twenty-seven or twenty-eight dollars was the average bill, and ours is at seventeen forty-five, so we're sixty percent, you know, somewhere close.
And not that I want rate changes, but we also need...
We have to be able to survive though.
Right. So, and the last, I know, I know, when, when we talked about it this afternoon, the last electric rate increase was two thousand and seven.
I mean, I, I was looking up those numbers earlier, and we haven't had a change since two thousand and seven, but I mean, on average for one thousand kilowatts, the average is a hundred and forty-seven dollars, and we're at a hundred and thirty-four, it was like comparing the average was with fourteen towns, uh, or something of the base rate, what is it, you call it, or the six dollar?
That's the meter charge.
That is super cheap.
Yeah.
What we're at, I think it's something we need to look into.
Another thing you can do though too is, and not drop it all off on your residential customers, is to look at your commercial customers on, uh, the demand charge, some things like that, where the people that use it and cause your summertime charges to come up are the ones that pay for it. It's like, it's like running a, a two-inch piece of pipe for water and using a garden hose most of the time, but when you need that, rest of that piece of pipe, it has to be there, so, you know, we're set up on that where we slam it one day, uh, in the middle of July, you get to pay for it for twelve months, that's just the way it works. So, you know, on your commercial customers, you know, there's some ways to bargain on some things there that if they want to shut down early and not hit that, just like they do irrigation systems, everything else, we're probably one of the few people in the country that don't have a commercial charge like that at all. I mean, we sell our, we sell our kilowatts to, to the courthouse at the same price we sell them to you, and you, I mean, there's no difference, so, and they're using ten times what you're using, you know, so, um, there's some ways to, there's some ways to do that and not hurt your residential customers too bad, and still let the people that are using it pay for it, so...
I think we need to look into it, just...
And Greg and I talked about that last winter, we just haven't got back together at all, he had some ideas that, that he wanted to bring to you guys too.
I think that'd be a good idea to go ahead and bring some of those ideas to council.
I'll give him a call and have him put something together.
Yeah.
It might be thirty days before he gets here, you know, but I'll, I'll give him all of it.
And that's definitely, since she had suggested that, I know we've talked about it, but I want to get the budget taken care of before we dive too far into that. I have Jen, she, the other day asked if I needed her to do anything. So I said, yes, I do, so she, in her in-between time, I think, has started looking at that, so...
Well, as I was going through our expenditures on administration, we used five, you know, since two thousand and seven, fire has almost doubled.
Since two thousand and seven?
Seventeen, I mean, you know, police went up thirty percent, fire almost doubled, streets up a hundred and fifty percent. You know, if you look at the increased expenditures, someplace we may need to cut some of those expenditures.
I imagine those street expenditures went up, because this is the first time in ten or twelve years, we bought asphalt.
And, and that, that may be where it is, as in you buy commodities.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
And that's what I-
We've stayed under what the budget was, but that's probably where it increased, although it was-
When I've been back and looked at the street, it was-
But we also, you know, we bought some equipment on that, too, I mean, we bought a skid steer, we bought a planer.
But the biggest difference is-
The biggest difference was in commodities, I believe, and that would be materials.
Materials, yeah, so it would probably be asphalt and oil.
Two thousand and seventeen is your actual expenses, though.
Exactly.
And, and what's budget is, is your maximum budget, what you think you're gonna be spending, so that leaves root, right. And eighteen is a little bit more adjusted to actual, but, six months into it, you don't know, but your nineteen, most of those numbers are a little bit higher on all, like, on all of the funds, I mean, that's just-
I mean, you're just looking, just take a look at police, it's a third of your expenditures, with your proposed budget on one budget page, I think, one-third.
Right.
Seriously? That's, that, that raises my eyebrows, seriously?
You guys set the rules.
I mean, if it comes down, I mean, it, it's there, don't mean we need to spend it.
Exactly.
No.
But I mean, we have control over, when it comes down to big purchase like a vehicle and such, I mean, I think the chief had been planning on buying a vehicle or something, wasn't that?
He, yeah, he budgeted, he budgets, um, money to go back to have money for new vehicles, because of the Larry Terry, when you're in a vehicle in town, the stop and go and stop and go is worse than highway miles, I guess, right?
Does he say one year O P M?
Your acronym?
Here, you want this?
My acronym is-
I wrote this a little, it's your copy.
It's easy to spend money when it's O P M, that's other people's money.
Yeah. You might want this, so you can study it.
You can have it away pretty quickly.
She's damn right, dude, what the fuck's going on?
Mayor, you might want this, so you can study it, I can always give you another copy, so.
I wasn't in here, I gave you that. Any other hot seat questions?
I thought you did a good job.
I mean-
I went through every page that you gave me.
And I, I mean, I really focused on, I took, you know, after, after I got a little bit more of an understanding of how it all worked, really, you just, you put in what was spent in seventeen, and you look at what they budgeted for, which, I mean, I had a little bit to do with what was done in eighteen, but, you know, it's just those questions of, why is this money here, why are we moving this here, why is, you know, in the, oh, is it, general fund, um, at the eight C, there, in the general fund, there's a capital project street and a capital project other, you know, there was really large amounts in both of those line items, and Melissa asked me, well, why are these here? And I don't know, I don't know. So that's where I think, you know, not saying that we're gonna have turnover, but for the purposes of, you know, my situation, I mean, we're all brand new, we have no idea of what's going on, we do now, because we're starting this, but, it would be nice to have that plan in there, just in case something were to happen and turnover did occur, there would be more of a plan in place of, hey, this is, this is our plan, this is, this is the vision, this is what's happening. And I think that would be very beneficial, not only for the whole entire community, but business-wise, as the city. I mean, it, strategic planning is a lot of work, but I'm willing to, and I actually took a leadership class that can do strategic plan, I can remember seven years ago.
Something that-
Let me pull my notebooks out.
Something I wanted to see about is, I contacted the council member and staffer, they were tearing down a house, they had hired a stone to tear down a two-story house, and I was just curious, and I called them, I had to get ahold of the clerk, and basically, what they do is they have a, a budgeted amount, I think it's between thirteen to twenty thousand dollars they do a year, and with that money is what they use to tear down houses, I mean, I think it's something we should look into.
We do the same thing, and it rolls over each year, I believe.
Right, and I think there's like a-
I think, yeah, I think we'd have something in there.
It was ten thousand dollars this year, this was seventeen, I believe, if I recall, from right through this budget.
That's right.
Actually, I think we projected the same towards, maybe I think we're right on that.
Yeah, because that wasn't the-
I believe, you may have increased it.
The non-departmental rate.
I don't remember if we increased it or not, but.
I think we increased it, it was either-
I think we increased it last year, generally.
I thought it was fair, may have been, I don't recall.
So I mean, as far as that money goes, I mean, because they're tearing down garages for like fifty dollars, and they're doing like whole houses for, I think, two hundred or something, I mean, it's super cheap, and I was just wondering like why we can't do that, to start cleaning the town up better.
Or conceivably are told as we could.
Yeah, he told us to do it, then he told us to do it.
Yeah, but that's what I'm wondering, like, we, I think we need to check into it, and I just, now while we have the budget out, I mean, I'm just curious on if we should put money in there, I don't know.
And we do have, for eighteen, we budgeted ten thousand, and so for nineteen, I kept it at the ten thousand. And, and that's really-
I think we started out at six thousand, because that's what it cost us on the one house, and tearing down was six thousand dollars.
And then I think we upped it for eighteen, is that what it would've been?
Then we changed, bumped it on up to ten thousand to help build it up, so we had the money set there.
If you drive through town, or, I'll, I'll bring you photos one of these days, and you just look at the houses, old churches, that, roofs are bad, some of them have people living there.
Here, here's my problem with that, like, our first round, you know, I started that project with Bobby, and, I mean, we got somewhere with it, we did, but what we're running into is, we're not qualified, the health department's not qualified to say, this structure is not sound. So until we have someone qualified to come in here and start telling us, yes, this structure shouldn't be standing, no, it's not livable, I mean, the health department can take the health aspect of it, but until we bring someone in that is qualified to make those calls, we can't do anything.
But it's not just that that I'm looking at, like, up there, there's people that know that they have a really bad-looking place, that can't afford to take it down, and they come to the city.
Yeah.
And that's something I'd like to look into, but we need to be reasonable, but staffers are obviously losing money.
Right.
And I, I might have lost in money.
We don't have people walking out our door saying, we wanna tear down our houses, I mean, I mean, it's been an issue just-
I mean, we could talk, we could talk-
The thing is, when you do that, though, eventually, that money's got to come from somewhere else, the expense does, it'll have to come out of somebody's budget.
You know, and that's why I'm wondering, like, I don't know how to do this whole deal with figuring out if it's gonna come out of that fund to pay for our fuel, or-
Yeah.
Our guys, or what, but I mean-
I mean, you ruin a tire or two, you know?
I think if you, I think if you look at the structures in town, I don't think a million dollars will cover it, some ones that need to come down.
No, I'm pretty sure it won't.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm bringing it up.
We're also tearing down all of these houses, and nothing's going up.
I'm just bringing it up now, just in case we need to budget something, because I think we need to get something going.
In most cases, the problem with taking those down is also a big building to back on.
They didn't want to build it where they, where they wanted.
Not according to the way the zoning sits now, without some revisions, and we end up mowing more lots, and, you know, and they end up on the tax roll, and it's just a vicious cycle.
That we're taking down, had families living in it when I moved to town-
Oh, yeah, sure.
Twenty years ago.
Sure, yeah.
They've been, probably my parents' generation that lived in them, their kids went off to college, never came back, died, and the houses are immense.
Well, just bringing it up now, I mean, if we need to figure something out for budgeting, guys, I think we, we can talk about it at the next meeting, this whole deal, I think a plan, but I mean, something for financing, I mean, right now, while we can, so that way we can start taking care of something in the winter, maybe.
I'm not too sure there aren't some people outside that would help fund that, too, you know, there's some, probably some people that would like to have some stuff cleaned up, that maybe would wanna do it, honestly, but, still, there are, you know, we got an offer from somebody to take down the corner store, so, you know, if it works, it's great, it's great, so. Yeah, I'm all with you, the more we clean up, the better. Sure is.
When do we have to approve this, or are we?
Tuesday, well, I have to have a toothpaste by Thursday.
Are you going to have us a different, or you wanna be tweaking this anymore between that, so we just need to get a hold and study it?
The only thing you, the only thing that so far you guys have talked about changing is the hundred thousand dollars on the water light to cushion for the, maybe electricity that we might need.
Which, I mean, you could leave the hundred and ten thousand in there, but figure out another number for the miscellaneous thing.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
If we can do the, the hundred thousand in the, plenty's on both spots, and that ends up working out, I'll put that in there, but I haven't, unless I'm missing something, I haven't heard any other changes.
Really don't think I seen.
I think through the winter, then we say, we do a strategic plan on what we want to start doing in the spring.
And I, I'm, I plan on sitting down a little bit more to get a better understanding of where, you know, like, where our wages are coming from, where, because, whose was it, I think, I think it's Dale, wherever Dale gets paid out of-
He gets paid out of sewer.
Out of sewer, so if you would look at the sewer fund, is that the one, is that one of the ones that are wacky?
Forty-oh-one is what it is.
The sewer utility, so. Is it sewer utility?
Yeah, he gets paid out of sewer.
I think I might change the numbers.
He ought to be paid out of parks.
Yeah, we had different numbers in there, and the ones I sent to you this morning, I think, and then we increased those, because in seventeen, we had actually spent forty-two thousand, and I think we had in there like thirty-something, and I'm not sure what, that's what I was worried about, I think I voiced that to some of you, I'm worried that, you know, we're not even budgeting the, you know, like, just even the building insurance, you know, we have another, what, ten to fifteen thousand dollars this year to figure out where the power plant's gonna go, and that's, I mean, that was not on the budget.
Wasn't even on the list, so.
So, you know, it's just-
So it costs us an extra ten or fifteen thousand on the insurance?
Well, I'm sure it will, yeah, it wasn't even insured.
Okay, parks, I noticed someone is going to, we can spend our parks, I guess, good.
We put ten thousand in there for some trees, we've got some dead trees, but I mean, other than that.
The special parks? Or in the general fund?
I don't remember where it was now, because I-
Because we have, we have special parks, and then we have-
Then we have parks.
Park in the general fund.
Yeah.
And your special parks is basically gonna be like your alcohol sales tax, right?
I think that's right, yeah.
Which can only be spent for parks.
Parks, nothing else, yeah.
It might-
Well, we make a, we make a mower payment out of there, for one thing.
You're probably thinking park out of the general fund.
Out of the equipment reserve, but it's basically, it's a park, it's a park expenditure, and, uh, we'll see. We put metal on the scout cabin, I mean, there was, there was some expenses there, you know, and the pool would be, would be, well, it is, but it's not, it's listed under that.
Yeah, and I think, I see, because, see, we have parks, salaries, the actual, in seventeen was forty thousand eight hundred forty-four, but then we have budgeted fifty-three seven hundred. Do we only have one person being paid out of parks? That's what I'm saying, I want to kind of narrow that stuff down a little bit more.
I think, I think David gets paid out of parks, and I think Steven gets paid out of streets, I'm not sure. But that would include insurance and stuff, too, would it not, Jamie?
Not for the salaries.
No, just personal services, though, yeah.
To pay them out of the department in which they work.
Do what?
Would it not be better to pay them?
Oh, yeah, it's turned upside down three ways right now.
Can we change that, or?
I think we could, I think we should.
And that's part, I don't know if you guys heard Melissa, but, um, like with Jen's, that split with the sewer, or the solid waste, like, for some reason, she's paid out ten percent, like, I don't know if we have to have a motion, but I would really like it to be out of one fund.
I think we should-
Not that it's that big of a deal, but-
I think we've got more than one we need to straighten around.
We need to look into-
Well, I think they're, she's the only one that's-
That's split that way.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know why that happened, but, is it ten fifteen for, ten fourteen per park?
It was on-
Ten fifteen.
Eight B when you gave me the first one, it was park.
Fifteen.
Salaries had a thirty percent increase, the total overall budget was a fifty percent increase to park. Uh, went through police salaries, twenty-five increase from twenty seventeen, it looks like, really. Uh, went fire, had a seventy-five percent budget increase from twenty seventeen. Uh, street, thirteen percent increase, and we know where they got there, because we're working on the street.
Yeah.
Uh, park had a fifty percent increase, thirty percent increase in just salaries.
Well, and that number-
But if we're moving people from one department to another.
It was the way they were set up, when, when they put them in from here, so I had no control over it, it came, it came from the clerk, and that was before Jamie.
Came from probably council, though, when they hire someone, they talk about where, where they're hired out.
That's a possibility, too.
So maybe we need to get these budgets consolidated to where they are reflective of what we're doing.
I agree.
Wouldn't hurt thing.
And I think it'll be, you know, if you don't monitor it, you can't, you don't measure it, you can't monitor it.
Because like, like distribution, when I, when I move to this position, then mine comes out of the general fund now, see, it doesn't come out of distribution anymore.
Okay.
So that, it screws stuff up, it really does.
Our, our municipal court, the salary doubled, the municipal court.
That was because-
Judge George Moore.
Of the increase of, we increased it because we didn't know what was gonna be happening with, well, not the, the caseload.
But do, what's our revenue out of the district court, municipal court, do we get any money?
Halfway through the year, we've already made, district court, we don't get any money.
I know, but I said, I said, Mr. government, municipal.
We've already brought in, in half a year, I wanna say this, but I might be wrong, I wanna say that we have brought in, in half a year, what we brought in the previous year, and the whole year.
Okay, the, I mean, the whole thing has a twelve thousand dollar budget, for expenses, I wondered what our revenue is. Not that I think our court system and our police department should be a revenue source account, but.
And I really do think I could probably look at the salaries under park.
So how do you guys feel about having them look into rearranging the budget for that department, for that person out of that department's actually getting paid out of that department? I think that'd be so much easier for the girls, and easier for us to look at when we're looking at hiring people, I think it's just easier.
That's right, it'd be easier for them and to understand us to understand, as long as they're-
I keep trying to ask if we can start fresh, but everyone tells me I'll, I can't start with, and lose all of the history.
Well, that's, I appreciate that.
There are some guys that will split, too, you know, after the year.
I mean, when, when I do, I'm afraid to keep things separated by enterprise.
Right.
However, things cross.
Yeah. Sometimes it would just be easier to start fresh, though, because there are so many different things that have happened, that I know nothing of, so.
I mean, I think where we run into issues usually is where we don't plan on hiring another guy, so then you get another thirty thousand dollars or something that you need to get out of that bunch, so I think we should, every department had, should really look into if they need to hire somebody, or what, but I think that would be real-
And make sure that the budget matches what's there.
So we don't run into issues, and then it gets out of hand in the next few years.
Yeah, exactly.
And I think the, because from my sheet that I'm showing, like, for the police salaries, that's for, I think that they had increased that, because when Ladonna was leaving, they were pushing- were pushing raises. And then that also includes a fourth officer. So with the three that we were paying, I was sitting right under, well, a little over a hundred and seventeen thousand. And that's with three employees, that's with paying three, I think. Pretty sure. We don't check that. Seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, yes. So whether we need sixty thousand dollars more with the hundred and eighty-three, I mean, I could probably decrease that as well if I needed to.
Or decrease it.
Do what?
Or decrease it.
I said decrease. But, I mean, I could also take, like, the patrolman one's salary currently, and make sure that we had enough for that, just in case the fourth officer was available, and just make sure, just not have that in there as, as high. Or low, or, I can just keep working on this, and we can discuss this next Tuesday. How does that sound? I'm getting some glazed over dyes.
We started four, we're still here at midnight.
Alden, I, because that was some of my concern, was the wages. And then, you know, some of the, some of the wages are, like, everyone in the general fund, all of the extra, like, social security and Medicaid and insurance and stuff like that, that's all out of the general fund, so it's right there. But then you have to be careful on your other funds, you know. That's what hurt us on, on the sewer fund for that employee was, they budgeted X amount for insurance, and his insurance was higher, which is not a loving fund. And I'm, like, but that was some of my concern, was I wanted to be more precise on the numbers of, hey, we actually know we're spending this amount, why is, why is it not matching? It's just going to take me a little bit, now that I actually understand it, a little bit more with having those few conversations with, like, yesterday, for some reason, it was like a light bulb that clicked. I'm like, oh, hey, I kind of get this now. So, I mean, I'll feel more comfortable playing around a little bit better with some of those. But I do, I started this spreadsheet here to make sure that all of our numbers on, on all of that, but it's still trying to figure out. So we just need to make sure that some of those things that we know we're actually spending is reflected there in the budget. So I'll keep working on some of those, and I'll just keep emailing you as I make the decisions, and we'll have a final draft for this Tuesday.
Thank you, Dan. Good. Very good. I really did.
And then we'll, we'll sit down and get a, a rate.
I'll get hold of Greg, and then we'll see about the rest. Then we'll find somebody to get us. I got a couple of guys I can contact if I need to help us.
Yeah. And whatever, I think it was Katie and G, whatever they sent to Jen was, it seemed very helpful. So I'm pretty excited to look at that, because it's not something I'm going to have to go and research. It's all right there, so. We'll get there.
It's good. It's hard to make.
I think we just have to get over the meter, meter jump.
You have to deal with that one.
I was going to say, huh, but.
You said you did not know how many, if we, our kilowatt usage was increasing, you don't have to get the numbers in.
I have the numbers. I just haven't sat down and dealt.
You have scratched them.
I'll try and, I'll try and get to that. I, we're trying to get this wired up out there so we can throw the switches on this transformer this week to help those guys. So we've kind of been locked in out there. But hopefully, after tomorrow, I'll have a couple of days here where I can sit down in the afternoon and do that, because I need to spend some time with Jamie anyway, so. I'll try and have those for you Tuesday.
What, are you going to let Melissa know, she, she was wanting to know whether she's coming Tuesday or not, or any of those things?
I mean, if we're going to start, I won't change a lot, but we're going to do a lot of numbers around for the employee deal.
Well, but I don't think you'll have time to do that by next Tuesday. I mean, that's something that they do inside, and it's not going to affect the budget, really.
Oh.
I mean, they can do that after the fact.
Shift.
That's right.
Shift the things around.
I think we should have Melissa here to answer any questions that we might have.
I mean, if she can make it, yeah.
Yeah, if she can make it. She said she could. She can make time.
Yeah, she said Tuesday she could. Tonight was.
Yeah.
So, and I'll, I'll call her tomorrow and discuss some of these changes and see.
That is. First, I have to ask a question, because of course I'm here. I, I just need to ask a quick question as far as pertaining to the agenda. Is there any way to go back to executive session to discuss the personnel matters regarding that, so I can have an update? Or do I need to call a special meeting for ten o'clock tonight, which is the legal way to do it, because I need to know what's going on.
That's a very good.
Ten minutes ago. I mean, you know, I, I need an update. Or if council, if one council member wants to sit back and update me, I don't care, but I need to know what's going on.
I don't know how.
I don't know the legality.
I don't know how your special meeting goes, because what's on there is all you can talk about. Well, if you've already talked about that item, then I would say this is an additional item. But I don't know if that's, if you're able to put that under that one.
John is going to regret giving me his cell phone number.
Well, we need to know. I've already had fifteen phone calls.
All the majors turning, seriously, I got some to phone.
Hi. Dakota's here now, and he's asking if he can go.
Back.
Oh, sorry, it's Jamie.
He's got too many phones.
I apologize. Um, so, just a random number from Russell. So Dakota is here now, and he is asking to be updated on the executive session. So can a council member just update him, or do we need, can he go into executive session with full council to discuss that? Or how does that work? Okay, okay. That sounds good. I will give him your phone number if that's how they choose to go forward. Right. Oh, so we have to wait till Tuesday. Okay, gotcha. Okay, perfect. I'll get it to you. Yeah, yeah. Can't wait for the. Okay, okay, perfect. Thanks, bye. Turns out he didn't save my cell phone number. Um, any of you can update him at any time, but we cannot go into executive session.
Okay.
Or you can call John, and he can update you.
Was he here?
Yes.
Good. Well, I have a meeting I'd like you to, if you would, to update me on, it'd be kind of like a committee thing, I guess, something.
As long as they're not a quorum, I don't care what you do.
No other business this time. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, yeah.
Motion in a second. We'll see you, Brian. Any other discussion? All in favor? Close carries five oh. Meeting is adjourned nine fifty-one.